Good evening and welcome to the June 9th, 2015 school committee meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable stations, channels five, nineteen, and twenty, is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Follinsby, do you have some announcements for us?
I do. The next school committee meetings are June 16th and 23rd. Meetings will begin at 6:30 PM. Last day of school is scheduled for Wednesday, June 24th, and I'm sure that one's gonna hold now. Special education, parent advisory council will meet on June 10th in the conference room on the second floor at 50 Payson Avenue. Schedule of events for our different schools. At Center Peppin, there's an all-school chorus performance on June 10th tomorrow. That one's at Peppin. And at Center, the all-school performance is on June 11th. At Maple School, we have an all-school theme show, Quest Enrichment Program presentation, June 10th, with a range date of June 18th. Preschool, last day of school and celebration is June 18th. American Heroes Wax Museum, that the grade four is putting on at Maple, is June 19th. That's lots of fun. You get to see the kids outside pretending to be different historic characters. Kindergarten, last day of school celebration is June 23rd. Grade three recorder concert, June 23rd. Grade four field trip to Mount Tom, moving up ceremony, June 23rd. Science night, June 23rd. At Whitebrook Middle School, we have awards night on June 17th. In-school drama play and semi-formal on June 18th. Talent show, June 23rd. Continuation, June 23rd. And eighth-grade breakfast, June 24th.
Thank you very much.
Deb?
Yes.
Can I add an announcement?
Yes.
For the high school, and I think everyone has a copy of this. Everyone here has a copy of the upcoming annual presentation by the East Hampton High School APUS history class. Everyone is invited to come to A Local Lens, which is a history of East Hampton and beyond. They're invited to join the students for presentation of their research on local history topics ranging from Shea's Rebellion to the Boscomic Incident, East Hampton Industry, the counterculture of the 1960s, and much more. The date is Wednesday, June 17th, 2015. The time is six to eight at the high school auditorium. Kelly Brown and her students invite people to come learn about the history of our community and support the work of East Hampton High School students. I would encourage everyone who can go, and I actually have some correspondence related to that, unless we have other.
We have no other correspondence.
Okay, if I could, just, I received a copy today of a letter written to Kelly by a member of the UMass Archives. It says, "Hi Ms. Brown, I'm one of the archivists here at the University of Massachusetts Archives, and we've had the pleasure of working with some of your students over the past years. We've been excited by the level of engagement your students demonstrate and by their interest in working with primary sources. In fact, we've enjoyed working with them so much, we wondered if there might be more that we could do, so I thought it might be worth reaching out to you to see if you had any interest in exploring further opportunities to work together with students and the primary sources available." She then goes on to say, "Of course, this is an unsolicited offer, so we understand that this is not the right time to pursue it, but either way, we wanted to let you know that your students are great, and we congratulate you in your efforts to connect them to local archives. All the best, from Danielle Kovacs of UMass Archives." So, congratulations to them for good work done.
Can you forward that to me, please?
Yes, I'll forward that to you right now.
Thank you very much. I'd also just like to take a minute to mention that graduation for East Hampton High School was Saturday, June 6th, and it was a wonderful, spectacular event, and we're all very proud of our graduates.
It's a great class.
Wonderful class.
Certainly a bittersweet evening, because it was so wonderful, but yet hard to say goodbye.
Absolutely. Okay, gifts.
There's several. A motion to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. The St. Patrick Committee of Holyoke for $500 to the National Honor Society. Taylor Real Estate for $100 to the Mr. East Hampton. Helping Hand Society for $500 to SAD. Cheryl Donaldson for $70 to SAD, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions. The Rotary Club of East Hampton for $500 to SAD. And the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition for $1,000 to SAD.
Thank you very much.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me. After the part, I will return.
Excused. This is the public speak portion of our meeting. If anyone would like to come and address the committee, you're more than welcome to do so at this time. We just ask that you state your name and where you're from, and we'd invite you to do so now. It doesn't look like anyone here is planning to do that, so we will move on to our finance subcommittee report.
No, we have a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's right, I'm looking at the wrong one. We have a presentation. I'm terribly sorry. Superintendent Follinsby.
Yes, I am very excited this evening, very pleased to be able to offer a certificate of appreciation to Jackie Willette. And Jackie, would you, and Ingrid, I believe you might like to come up, and Ann Knapp, our Director of Special Education. So Jackie has been a member of the East Hampton PAC, the Parents Advisory Council for Special Education, for 14 years, I believe it is. And 12 years as president, is that correct?
Chair.
Chair, co-chair. So she's really been a driving force in our district to keep our PAC strong and to keep our families engaged and to be a support for all of our families here in East Hampton. And we're so grateful for that, Jackie. And so this is a certificate of recognition in honor of your 14 years of dedicated service to the East Hampton Special Education Parent Advisory Council.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And I think Ingrid has something?
Okay. I just wanted to share a sentiment. I've been co-chair of the PAC with Jackie for the last two years. And as Helen Keller once said, "I would rather walk with a friend in the dark than alone in the light." And as parents of children with special needs, we often feel like we're navigating the world of special education in the dark. And Jackie has been there to hold so many parents' hands and to, with support and with guidance, and help us get through what can be a really challenging and confusing system. So I am so grateful for your leadership, as are so many other parents in East Hampton, and thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to express my gratitude towards Jackie. She has been a font of wisdom and support, not only to all of the parents in the PAC, but to myself, and her efforts will be sorely missed by all of us.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Thanks.
I just wanted to mention that 15 years ago, when I started coming to the PAC, I came because I had a three-year-old and a one-year-old, and I needed a night out. And I knew nothing. I mean, I had nothing to give at that time, but I had everything to gain from the other parents and administrators that were there, that were sharing their knowledge. And that's really what the entire thing is about. Since that time, we've been through three special education directors, many school committee members, and multiple amounts of teachers, therapists, and aides. So when I was told about this presentation, you know, you want to sound profound when you come up here, and I've always been nervous talking in front of all of you, but the best way for me to do that was to look back and watch my child graduate. He not only walked with his class, but earned his diploma, which is amazing, and we are all very proud of him. And then you have a party to celebrate. And at that party, my cousin asked me, "Was it harder to go through high school yourself or as a parent?" And for me, it was definitely as a parent. And I get to do it again for another two years, because I don't think it's whether you're special education or regular education. As a parent, you just take on all those anxieties. And then lastly, a middle school teacher was able to come and participate in the party with us and celebrate my son and his achievements. And before she left, she pulled me aside, and she thanked me. She thanked me for making her a better teacher, for challenging her continuously on how to better access the curriculum for my son and for the other students in her classroom. And I think that's what it's all about. It's about the parents and the teachers really working together. So I'd just like to promote this to all of the parents, to really step forward, become a part of the PAC, be a voice, and then I'd encourage you guys to really have a liaison, bring the PAC into your meeting so that you can become educated about some of the things that we are dealing with all the time. And it's just going to make the committee and the school system much, much better. So thank you guys for everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jackie. Okay, are we ready now for a finance subcommittee report?
Sure. Nothing new to report, just the minutes are in the PAC that we talked about last meeting.
Thank you very much. Policy subcommittee.
We just met before this meeting, and we will have the minutes at our next committee meeting, and we discussed some policies that needed to be reviewed because there were some changes to legislation.
Very good. And Wendy, do we have a collaborative update?
I unfortunately missed the last session. It was at the end of May, and I was recouping from back surgery. And I really tried to go, I even confirmed that I would go, and then I just couldn't get myself there. I still wasn't driving. But I will get you, I will send, yeah, I will send a copy of the director's report and make sure that everybody at least has that, and I will be, I believe there's another one at the end of June.
Very good. And we don't have a student representative with us at this time for this meeting, but we look forward to having a new representative joining us shortly. So moving on, we'll move directly to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I asked Ashley Barstow, our Director of Technology, to join us this evening to give school committee members and our community an update on the wonderful changes that have occurred in our technology department since Ashley took over as director. So Ashley, you ready? We'll see if he has any snafus with the technology here.
Let's hope so, because they're humanizing. So, if you remember, when I was hired about one and a half years ago, I mentioned this buzzword that we might have all heard, is virtualization. And it's one of the coolest things, if I get a little nerdy, that's happened in the computer industry in the past five to 10 years. It's really allowed our dollars to go further than ever before, and it just reduces our overhead. And everybody knows technology is expensive, and anything we can do to reduce that cost is amazing in my eyes. I always look to try and reduce the cost while maintaining something better. So one of the things that we implemented, or at least we did since I started, is our server virtualization. We virtualized all our servers. Now, a server is, if you're unfamiliar, it's all the stuff that runs behind the scenes. It's your infrastructure. It's Power School, KVS, the accounting systems, all those things that, when we look at the IT room and you see that frozen room that's at 60 degrees, and the guy's in there, and you got racks and racks of equipment, that's what those are. And so what virtualization does is it allows us to consolidate that to smaller equipment that's more energy efficient and doing more things. So one of the things that happens with computers is 98% of the time, it's idle, just like your car. You're not driving it right now, we're all sitting here. So virtualization allows us to use that idle time and do something else. So that way, we can consolidate something that would need two physical resources into one. And because of that consolidation, we get all these benefits. So it provides us energy conservation. We no longer need lots and lots of equipment. We can get by with one or two pieces instead of 15, 20, or 40 that we might have needed before. We get less capital expenditures, because again, we're only buying minimal numbers of pieces of equipment. It consolidates and makes my life easier managing. So I can do everything from home now, I don't have to physically go in. I can help people when I'm in different buildings, and that consolidation really applies for everything. Our faster services, because it's all consolidated, it's all in one location, we're able to upgrade the quality of service. So they can talk to each other, they can operate faster without having to worry about old links between the different buildings that we used to have. And then we have redundancy with the virtualization. One of the benefits is we now have the ability to simply move it to a different piece of hardware and not care what that hardware is. In the old days, and we all had this happen before, the server was down, and it took like three days for them to set up a new box that they had to get, and it took forever to restore the backups. Now we're talking minutes. We simply go in and say, "Start on this other piece of equipment," and off it runs. So it gives us that failover, that redundancy that everybody really wants, at a price that, quite frankly, I think is going to really help shock us all, because it is. It's very cheap now, and it's something that big businesses were doing 10 years ago, and everybody's phasing it in, and it's time East Hampton does it too. So if we just kind of look overall, and you don't have to, I do have printouts, but when I started...
Turn the light down.
Yes. When I started, each one of these represents our school, the different locations, and we can see that there was a server at Maple School, and a server at Center School, and Peppin School, and all the bigger buildings had multiple servers. And that's how it had to be done. 10 years ago, we had to do that. In order for you to get access to your things, it had to be done. But the server equipment's very expensive, and it has a short life cycle. It's about three years long. And if we look at what equipment was being expended when I started here, it was about $56,000 of capital expenses that had to be expended over three years to maintain the services. And that's about $18,600 and change a year that we had to spend on these capital expenditures behind the scenes that nobody really noticed. We all knew it had to be there, but nobody really noticed. And then, one of the things that's really amazing is the power. A lot of people don't do this, but we were using about $4,500 a year in electricity just to run these pieces of equipment. And it's so high, because they run 24 hours a day, every day of the year. And when we add that up, it comes out to about $23,000 a year that we spend on infrastructure and servers, and this is just the physical hardware. We're not talking about software licensing, all right? We're just talking the physical pieces of equipment. And they all go bad, and three years is about the life cycle. And if we go through the budget, we've been spending approximately that on there. With the virtualization now, and the way our system is now, we only have two servers that are doing the job of those 12. And because of that, we're able to bring the expenditures down to $8,000 a year on the capital expenses. And then our power saving goes down to about $1,300 a year, is what we're expending on electricity. So we're using somewhere around a third of the electricity. Our capital investment is about half, and yet we're able to provide things that are faster and more reliable. We also now only have to have it at one location, and that's in part because of the fiber optic project that we got through last year. That allows the schools to interconnect at a speed that we no longer need, everything at every site. So combining that with the virtualization here, our capital expense and operational costs goes down to about $9,300 a year. So our per-year expenses on that really starts to drop. And if we just kind of compare them here, we can see that we're saving about $10,000 a year on equipment, and about $3,100 a year on electrical costs alone by doing this project. And this, yes?
I just, I know you said this, but I just want to emphasize this, if I heard you right, for people listening at home, that when you're talking about equipment savings for the year, we're not talking about devices in our students' or teachers' hands. This is the behind-the-scenes stuff that, like you said, none of us really think about on a daily basis.
Exactly.
And that's, we just can't emphasize that enough.
Yes, it's not what the students see, it's not what the teachers see. It's all the stuff behind the scenes that just has to be there for a location with approximately 1,000 computers. So it's the behind-the-scenes stuff, and that's the most expensive stuff usually, and it's the least seen, and everybody, "Why do I have to spend this?" But we all know what happens when it goes down, nothing works anywhere. So yes, this is not what we see in the hands, but what this does translate to is, we're able to take this kind of money of the $13,000 a year there and reallocate it to resources that the students see. So for this year, we were able to add an additional computer lab at Whitebrook of 27 units, and we also added a lab at Maple Elementary School of 24. And one of the biggest things at Maple Elementary, they've really been utilizing it, and their computer use went from something that was, they'd use the computers maybe once every three, four weeks, to they're used every day, all day long now. So having these resources available, getting them out more adequate locations, really increased the usage, and of course, the literacy of our students are going up. So students that couldn't turn on a computer before in first grade, or were having those kinds of "how do I type" issues, we now have a typing curriculum that they're introduced, and they're working all the way up from grades one all the way up through four. And so now they're getting computerized projects out that they never had in the past. And so this is where the exciting benefits of the savings come across, is we're able to take that money and reallocate it to where the students see it, the parents can see it, and they can see the end result.
I just, to back you up, not only I think does it benefit their computer literacy, but I think we can emphasize when we talk about difficult budgets, and you know, we don't maybe always have the ability to supplement with things like foreign language or additional assistance in math, they're able to access a lot of these programs for enrichment and support for the curriculum as well.
Yes, but they need the devices in their hand. And so this allows us to get them the devices in their hand and minimize the behind-the-scenes costs. So while we are all facing a tight budget and we want to keep doing more, by doing projects like this, where over the course of the three-year lifecycle equipment, we're saving approximately $40,000, that's $40,000 that we can supplement other things that are needed. And whether that be online curriculums or computers in their hands, or even in some cases, teachers or staff.
And it is very different from years past, when our computers that the students were using were getting older and older and slower, and our teachers were using. So now that Ashley's come in and been able to find these savings, he's also been able to slowly begin to get rid of those, that old equipment, as you've seen in some of the surplus requests here for school committee, and bring in equipment that works adequately in our classrooms and supports our students and our teachers.
Yes, and our call volume has gone significantly down. We're about 40% of the calls for support that we used to be at the beginning of the year.
Just in this school year?
Just from this school year alone. And last year, we didn't have a system to track it, but I can tell you from my hair, I have a lot more hair that isn't falling out right now. And if there's anything else, feel free to ask. I know I kind of rush, but...
It's amazing. It really is.
And it's my pleasure. I like doing this. It is kind of nerdy, you might see that, I'm kind of a little excited about it.
Ashley, you might talk a little bit about Darren, who works with you, and his skillset and how that, how you brought that to the district, and maybe a little bit about the high school and how that's...
One of the things that's happened is, over the past year, one of our employees got a better job and left, and we were able to recruit a new employee, Darren Polis, and he has a much higher skillset than what we would have normally hired. But with that, it's allowed me to focus more on these bigger-picture tasks behind the scenes, and he can focus on a lot more broader range of stuff, and so we have more redundancy in the capabilities of who can do what. So if I'm out, he can actually take care of most things.
That's great.
Instead of previously, you had, if I was out, he just couldn't go anywhere once the other person got stumped. He's capable of doing much more than what we would normally have. And to have two people with that kind of skillset in a school district is rather extraordinary, and we both feel kind of lucky about that, because it enables both of us to have a life again, if I say that right. What we find is oftentimes, you're the only one, and you end up pulling your hair out all the time. So he's been able to bring that. He's also been able to bring a lot of audio specialty with him. He has a background. He used to tour with Neil Young and be the audio engineer. So we were finally able to fix the sound issues over at the high school gymnasium, which we were plaguing for years, and that was one big thing, which was nice to have off our back. But after having, I think it was, two independent companies come in and still having issues, he was able to walk in and we got it all fixed in one day. And graduation went off without a problem. So he brings a whole nother level of services that I think we complement each other on, and we're able to provide better for the district.
The way I know that it's going well is I don't have teachers emailing me with their complaints. And in fact, I have just the opposite. I have teachers saying, "Oh, you know, we just so enjoy working with Ashley and Darren," and you know how helpful they are and supportive. So I think we really are beginning to have this wonderful comprehensive program in our school, thanks to Ashley's work and clearly Darren working with him.
Yes, he's one of my best hires. I don't mind saying that.
You're amazing, Ashley, and you came in that way, and we very much appreciate your services.
Thank you.
It's great working with you.
Yeah, and just even in speaking about hiring Darren, who we might not have been able to afford to hire before, Ashley was able to find savings, and that's what he does. He comes to me and says, "I have the savings in my budget, and I'd like to be able to use it for this," and can't argue with that.
And these are the kinds of projects that allows me to go behind the scenes, find the real savings that otherwise I would have been too busy just doing, getting by. And we've all seen that before, and we know the analogy of the woodsman who won't take time to sharpen his saw, even though it'll cut 10 times quicker. Now I'm able to focus on some of those behind the scenes and start recouping some of those costs, and so that does really help.
We're lucky to have you.
Like being here, thank you.
Did you say he's one of your best hires? I might say that.
Yes, I would say he's one of my best hires. I've had a number of good hires recently, though, in the past years, but Ashley certainly has been an asset to the district.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Ashley?
Could I get, just as a liaison, this sits on the municipal, the advisory committee for the Energy Committee and the mayor, I'd love to see that, just the page that had the energy conservation...
Yes, I have a printout with all the slides, because it's a very short thing, so we can get that to you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our matters for action, we have some minutes that need to be approved. No, that's this meeting, so, here it goes. So, all right. On May 26th, budget work session.
Motion to approve the minutes from the budget work session on May 26th, 2015.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes from the regular session on May 12th, 2015. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Abstain. One abstention. We have warrants and payroll.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated May 28th, 2015, the amount of $455,963.18.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Abstain.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated May 28th, 2015, in the amount of $355,223.86.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated June 11th, 2015, in the amount of $461,553.36.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Abstain.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 11th, 2015, in the amount of $183,993.89.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And that is it.
Okay. And we're moving on to a school choice request for openings. Do you want to talk about that, Nancy? Do you want to?
Well, we always have a process every year where I go to building administrators and I ask them to determine how many slots they feel comfortable opening for school choice students. Students who would take advantage of a choice program and come to our district from other districts. The, the balance always is to maintain appropriate class sizes at all grade levels in our district. So as much as we'd like to open more choice slots, we want to make sure that we have the, the good student teacher ratio that we try to maintain here in our district. We currently have or had fifteen students on our waitlist for kindergarten, which we're very pleased about. And through some restructuring of teaching positions and some reallocation of resources, we were able to have a complement of six kindergartens this year, each kindergarten with a para. And so they will all have a very nice class size and we're able to bring in some, a number of choice students who we look forward to having remain with us over the years.
Did you say what the average class size will be in the incoming kindergarten?
At this point, I think it's about twenty.
That's fantastic.
And it may, may fluctuate, but.
Great.
Nice job, Nancy.
Mm-hmm. So should we do this approval separately each?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I have all of it. I have one quick question. So we have no additional slots opening in the other elementary levels.
That's correct.
Okay.
We had to move a classroom teacher.
Yep.
Position from one grade level down to kindergarten, so we have to keep them low.
Okay. So then we have a middle school request for grades six, seven and eight.
I think we can do it, we can do it all inclusive, can't you?
Yeah, we can do it all together. I was just sharing the information. And then we have high school choice openings for grades nine, ten, eleven and twelve. Any, is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the school choice slot openings for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year as requested by the building principals.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. If we have students like in grade eleven and twelve transferring in, how, do they determine, do they, do they just allow those students to commit? How do they determine that they'll be eligible for graduation on time?
Well, they would do.
Review that before they allow them?
No, they allow them to come in, but they would review their, their credit history and you know, let the student know what the implications might be, you know, if they chose to come into our school. But we all, always try to make every effort to, you know, make a comparison that's advantageous to the student and to provide opportunities for credit recovery if they're needed.
Very good. Moving on now to the Whitebrook Middle School field renovation project.
And I'm going to ask Andy Pecat if he would, our business manager, if he would, consultant, if he would come to the podium because this has been a, a little bit of an up and down process here. So I think Andy can explain it better than anyone.
Well, the district received a CPA grant for renovating the football field at the middle school. In addition to the grant, there was a twenty thousand dollar match from the Friends of Football. We did a bid, which was a very long drawn out process. And the results came in substantially higher than what was available with the matching grant and the CPA funds. So what you need to vote tonight is under thirty thirty-nine M, you can negotiate. But there, there are some, let's say gray area regarding what you can or can't negotiate. So the language that you have in front of you is the fact that in the specifications, there was the ability to do the project in whole or in part. So that is what it is we are recommending that you do now, which is to approve one of the most verbose votes needed so that we can move forward with this project. I do want to say a, a big thanks to Duset and Associates, the engineering firm, John Broder and Tom Hogan. They are the ones that put together the specifications and worked with the low bidder regarding some adjustments of things in order to proceed ahead with that. They did that all at no cost.
Thank you. They've been wonderful in terms of helping us with this project.
I, I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Was, there was no alternate in the bid, Andy?
No, no. It was in what it was though with that language, six-four, six-point-four is what they put in to be able to either do the project in whole or in part.
Okay.
To be able to negotiate with the low.
And how many bids were there? Was it just one? There were two? And obviously this was the lower of the two.
Yes.
So just to make sure I understand, you said that there are CPA funds, it was twenty thousand dollars from Friends of Football.
Correct, and two seventy-nine and change for the CPA.
Um, and you said that the bids came in above our total amount?
Far above.
Okay, so we're doing a.
It's just a partial then?
This is what it is. Because of the language in the specifications, specifically the six-point-four, the section that is there, it allows the city to negotiate doing the project in whole or in part if it's deemed in the best interest to do so. So we went back, we, when I say we, Duset and Associates went back with the low bidder and went through to look and see what it is they could do with the funds that were available.
I have a question. So who, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go first, you go first.
Who will oversee how they prioritize, what will be done, where will they stop, what, what will come first?
That, we did, we discussed that. That's going to be Pete Roy. He will act as the, in a sense of the de facto project manager with consultation from Duset and Associates. They've offered to continue helping out.
And also, our school department attorney, Russell DuPere, will be drawing up a contract that will specify exactly what the scope will be and, and all the ins and outs of this.
Karen?
Andy, would you mind explaining that to me? I'm not familiar with that, that, you know, this is the, the six-point-four?
Uh-huh.
I'm not, in the bidding process, that just hasn't ever seemed to have come up before, so it, it's new to me. Normally, the bids come in higher, you don't have the money and if there's no alternate, you can't alter it. So would you mind explaining that to me? It's real, it's very interesting.
Well, it's interesting, so much so that the attorney general who oversees thirty thirty-nine M, we ran that by them because it was such a significant change in what the bids came in at versus what it is that we're going forward with that both Attorney DuPere and the district us. We wanted to make sure that this got the blessing, if you will, of the attorney general's office. And they came back and said that that language, you're right, is not normally seen but could be used in a sense to then go forward with the project as we're presenting.
What was, yeah, I don't know why I'm so confused. It's probably the Benadryl. So what was the quote on the, on the bid? What, what, I know, I understand it was far above.
Original bid was five hundred eighty-two thousand dollars and change.
Five eighty-two, and we have.
Two ninety-nine.
Right. Thank you.
Hence the change, yes. The, some background was that the Duset, they asked about, could we put in the bid the amount that we had available? You know, when you're entering in public bidding, I mean, that's kind of, in a sense, for lack of a better phrase, showing your hands. You know, so the thought was, well, put in either language that we can negotiate with the low bidder and/or what they proposed and included in there. Also, I will say, this was, the specifications were reviewed by Attorney DuPere prior to it being sent out as well. So not only at the beginning, but then afterwards, when we had to sort of come up with this alternative, both Attorney DuPere and the attorney general's office have been involved and given its approval.
Last, no, just question. Have they given any indication about the likelihood that maybe they can complete the majority or perhaps even all, because I know when you're, when they're preparing a bid, there's some wiggle run there. They're guessing on a lot of things and started any excavation.
It's going to be tight, but their goal is to, because it is known by all parties involved that there's no contingency in this project. So if something happens during the project that results in a cost overrun, something then, it's going to be, the onus is going to be on the district to revisit with the, should it go forward with Mountain View? The vendor to either come up with an alternate so that it doesn't go over budget.
Is there any way that you can summarize for us briefly, like what the scope of the project originally was supposed to be and where we'll be at with this?
We're, we're getting a football field, but it's, some of the, some of the details involved have to deal with drainage, things that were how far down they were, the original thought was they had to go versus what they actually have to go. There were some changes regarding the hauling away of earth because the vendor thought that they would have to take the earth to a dumping location that they use when in fact, the city has a spot right next to Whitebrook that, you know, we're going to open up the gate and allow, and that substantially cut down on, on the hauling cost. So there's a lot of the technical side of things regarding the type of stone used in the draining and whatnot and the thickness of piping. And so those changes resulted in us being able to come down to a price. But from Duset and Associates, their view is we're getting what it is that we've wanted to.
We are. Mayor Cattrick.
So, so if, if I understand this correctly, Andy, what, what happened is you had two bids. One was, you had two hundred ninety-nine thousand. The lowest bid came in at five eighty-two. What was the other bid?
I don't remember that.
Obviously over the five eighty-two.
About sixty grand over.
And this vote allows, you know, the information in this vote allows us to change and revise the scope of services?
In a sense, what it doesn't allow us to change and revise, it allows us to enact clause six-point-four.
Which just takes a portion of it.
That's correct.
So to take a portion of the project, so.
Portion determined.
Say a portion of the project. It's a portion, if you read six-point-four, what it says it allows for.
A portion of the phase project.
Right.
Okay. And you're, it's allowable to go through what the bid, what the bid's scope was.
Correct.
And then pick what part of the?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So in essence, it would almost be, I mean, the same way as if you had bid it with three or four different alternates.
Or honestly.
Didn't, weren't able to take any of the alternates because of the price?
Somewhat of a, I want to say a unique, but has been done in the past. Our facility consultant, my company's Philly consult, facility consultant said, we could have accepted the bid for the five eighty-two. And then day one after the contract is signed, enter into a deducting change order and bring it down to the two ninety-nine.
It's very different.
Yeah.
Very, very different. It's the first, first time I've seen this one done. Interesting.
You know, there was a good deal of anxiety initially about this. And of course, our, our athletic director, Patty Doherty is, was very concerned about not having repairs to the football field before the start of the football season because I, I believe that she and, and the coach believe that the, the field really isn't safe. So it was fortuitous that this ended up working out and, and we got approval for it. So we're, we're looking forward to going forward.
So can I ask, what is the timeframe of this?
It'll be over the summer.
That's great. It's supposed to be ready for the fall or that's the.
That's great.
That's the intent.
So I'm sorry for asking a multitude of questions, but, so the company that's providing the services, they don't provide a revised scope of work or a revised set of parameters in terms of exactly what they intend to accomplish for the two ninety-nine?
We, we provide them with changes that we were willing to accept.
I see.
And then they came back and said, with these changes that we are looking for, the parts that we wanted to address, what would it come back at? So in a sense, Duset and Associates, for lack of a better phrase, they cherry picked the items that would still get a field to come down within the two ninety-nine of funds available.
I see. And obviously, there weren't any alternatives for getting the additional funds. There weren't any options for, obviously.
I don't know where I could find two hundred fifty grand.
Yeah.
I just always get nervous, you know, you don't want to do a project halfway and then have regrets five years down the road that, oh, well, we didn't do it right. You know, we didn't do it thoroughly, we didn't.
And all, and I would, as much as I'm being glib about the two fifty, the other option would have been to reject all bids and rebid.
Right.
But knowing what the market is looking at and what the, the timeline and as Superintendent Follinsbe is mentioning about the safety, with the availability and with the blessing of the attorney general's office to say, yes, you can go ahead with that, we felt and with Duset's advice, saying, yes, you can go forward.
Did they put that in, in writing, Andy?
The attorney general?
Yeah.
I did get an email from the attorney on call who reviewed it, yes. And admittedly, her, her blessing of it was, yes, you can, although the language is somewhat borderline. You know.
Could we do this and then do as you, as your associate suggested with the deduction change order as soon as we sign the contracts? Could we proceed both ways and would we be double?
Well, you can't vote two, two ways for a contract with two-dollar amounts. And honestly, you know, as much as that's a feasible way, with all the work that we've done here now, we've got a scope of services, we've got changes and the agreement from the attorney general's office that, yes, you can proceed. And everything that's been done, which is, it'd be a different discussion if the things that we were talking about were going to call, cause the price to go up because, say, we decided we wanted something different. But every, everything that was made, the decisions that were made were in the best interest of the city.
It's just going to, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand it and I'm a little slow on the uptake. I think I need more caffeine. The, so we're accepting a partial, but it's not, it doesn't mean that part of the project is being done.
We're not going to get a football field of eighty yards. You know, I mean, we're going to get a football field. It's some of the changes and things that from the engineer's point of view regarding, as I was saying, the drainage and the thickness of the pipe, you know, that, that was originally presented. Whether it was things like, you know, admittedly, one of the things the, the low bidder missed on the specs. You know, and said, oh, I, I thought you wanted me to go, you know, further below. And they're saying, no, you actually only need to go, you know, X number of inches.
It's not going to change the quality of the end result.
That's correct.
Product, right? And it's not going to like. We're not going to be talking about this again in two years, three years, needing to approach the current need to redo something that should have lasted ten years.
Yes.
And Friends of the Football folks are on board and supportive?
Very much so. You know, we're obviously doing this on a very limited budget. They're very much in, in favor of this. We're getting quite anxious when it appeared that maybe this wasn't going to happen this year. Again, I, I think because of the condition, current condition of the football field. And you know, this is our opportunity to use these funds to, to help us provide a better playing field for our, for our students. And I feel comfortable with Andy and the work that he's done with the attorney general's office, with the Duset and, and with the Friends of Football. Everybody is feeling eager to see this begin so that it will be ready for the fall.
What if a long, I'm sorry, what if a long-term maintenance financially for us with the, with the field when it's completed in this way as opposed to any alternatives that you consider?
Well, we, we didn't have any other alternatives to consider. It was just this field or keep the field that we currently have. And in terms of maintenance, it would be pretty much what we're, well, not even as much as what we're having to do with our current field. I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but you know, there's the.
You don't have your turf management?
No, it's not my area of expertise, but there, you know, the, what we do to maintain our current football field. But it's been difficult to maintain it because of the water and the lack of drainage. So I would guess, and it is simply a guess, that the maintenance would be less difficult with this new project.
So this new field, this is a new field adjacent to the old field?
I thought it was probably on the same side.
Yeah, no, I think it's on the same side. I think they, let's say, changed it again. They, they considered trying to do it on the other field, but that was not an option that worked. So this is where the old field is.
Same location.
Same spot.
Right. It was considered at one time, you're correct, but no, this is going to be in the same spot.
Nancy, can I ask a, a somewhat side-related conversation or related question to this? And I know we don't have a crystal ball and of course, our, our student safety on the. And I know we don't have a crystal ball and of course, our, our student safety on the current field is an, an imminent issue. And at the same time, not knowing that crystal ball, not knowing what we hold as far as future buildings and condenses and all that stuff for new school building potential, would this football, we look at this long-term, is that field what we're looking at? Is that an investment long-term regardless of what plays out with school renovations?
I, I really can't answer that question. You know, I think we've made investments in all of our schools right now. You know, at the playground, at center school. I think the, the, the theory is that yes, this would be a, a space that the community could use, you know, going forward. But we, you know, we are in such, in such the, of the infancy of the school building project, we don't know really, you know, what, what they would even consider at this point.
Yeah, and I, and I respect and understand that that's, those are years down the road things, but it sounds to me like a football field is a year down the road, year, many years down the road product as well.
Many years down the road product.
That that should be lasting, that would be, that would maintain, retain as a, as an investment.
And you know, the, the football program in our, our district is a very strong program. You know, it, it draws a lot of, of community interest. And we have a, right now, a, a cooperative with Hampshire Regional, which also I think is a benefit to us. So we really were in a, a state of perhaps trying to find another location. And I don't know what that would be if, if we weren't able to repair this field, so.
I apologize for, for coming in late and, and I, I, I've missed this before. In terms of the upfront funding, can someone just quickly remind me where the upfront funding CPA and?
Friends of Football. Friends of Football is twenty, CPA is two seventy-nine and it can, actual is five oh eight and some change. Is that right?
Right, but that's the part that's confused. So, so we're actually going to be able to do it for?
Yes.
Two ninety-nine.
Two hundred ninety-nine?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. And then my question in relation to, and it's in athletic field irrigation system revised layout point four. Do we currently have the, the five hundred dollar a year cost and eighty-five dollar an hour service contract on the field that exists right now?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah. So there, there will be some, the costs will change as to what we're, we're paying. At most, I would say, you know, any increase would be negligible for lack, I mean, I know we're, with budgets being tight and everything, but when you're looking at the, the maintenance based on the inadequate drainage system that we have versus what we're going to get, you know, the, it's, you know, I want, when I say, will it be a fair, an equal trade-off? Probably not. But, you know, the differential would be, I think, what we're getting and the ability to maintain it would be worth the, any upfront or additional costs associated with the maintenance of it.
Okay, so that was the point of clarification that I needed. We are in the end talking about the likelihood of having to spend more money, but having a better facility as a result. And, and I'll ask only this last question because I know how difficult it was for Williston on the other side of the woods. And I have no idea what the topography comparison is. And even if somebody showed it to me, I wouldn't know how to break it down. All I know is that it took a long time and a number of efforts that didn't work to deal with the drainage issue. As, as a softball coach who often looked every time it rained at a pond that would occur. I know land varies, you know, acre by acre in some parts of the town and other sections. I imagine it's pretty much the same all the way across. I just would want to be sure that we don't find ourselves at the end of this with the same irrigation problems, I mean, drainage problems, excuse me, that we faced before. But, and so I, I'm just saying that because I think we're all aware that that's sort of the hidden problem that's, that's challenged the current facility is, is draining water out of soil in that part of town. And having experienced it firsthand, less than a mile away, you know, I, it's amazing to me. And it's still a challenge on any of the quote, lower, you know, fields at, at Galbraith. It's much, much better than it was twenty years ago or thirty years ago, but it's still, that's a, that's a tricky spot to get water to go away.
So I can tell you that from the meeting that we had with Dusset and the low bidder and when we were talking about it and I was pretending to understand half of what they were saying. But, you know, they, they talked about the fact that, you know, not only Dusset did testing of, of the soil, it was in the specifications. They allowed Mountain View to go out to the field and do their own testing. Then they even discussed things like the, the soil that's going to be laid down, the makeup of it so that it would improve not only the growing, but the irrigation whenever it is that it rains. So they went even down to that level of the quality and the type of, they were talking about the mixture of things that would result in better drainage of the field.
So just to clarify for the public, they diagnosed the current problem and they presented what they believe is a remedy or a solution to that?
Yes.
And Dusset has had experience with this in the past with football fields, so.
And so one last question that I'm, that I'm thinking of in relation to this is we keep referring to it as a football field and part of my question about, that links in with some of my colleagues' questions is multiple uses of the field and how it would be set up. You know, it can be called the football field, but I presume that other teams would be able to use it during other seasons and that we're not setting ourselves up for any sort of potential conflict there. That, you know, if this field, if this field drains so well, could the soccer team play there if they needed to be and if there was a problem? Right? I mean, I realize this gets down into some details, but we're not, by, by accepting this gift of twenty thousand dollars from the Friends of Football, we're not creating a, what would the phrase be?
Exclusivity agreement?
Yeah, some sort of exclusive use of the facility. It, it's just a, a free and clear gift. And they're saying, we hope that we'll always be able to use this for football, but it doesn't preclude the school committee or the school system down the road. The superintendent might come to us in five years and say, we need to use this spot for something else. We're not locked in by accepting this gift to difficulty if that should, should come about.
No, that was not the intent. And since it's a Conservation Preservation Act grant, it's really for the community. Say, you know, that's one of the criteria of giving this grant, so. For community use.
I mean, it sounds like it's a great, and again, I apologize. I, I think you've all had the benefit of more time to think of it than I have. I'm, you know, when, when something looks like it's almost too good to be true, I just want to be sure that it really is as good as it seems and that there aren't some potential difficulties that we tonight, at least in my case, relatively quickly making a decision about having read through this and voting for it, don't find down the road that the, that the funding sources limit the, the discretion of the school as to the use of the location. My hope would be that as long as folks wanted to play football there and we thought it was safe and wise to do so, that they would be able to do so for, you know, decades into the future. But I'd like to be sure that the, the school system reserves that authority to decide what, what happens there.
It would be school department, under the school department, so yes.
And, and, you know, following up with that conversation, I don't think it looks as, you know, too good to be true. The fact is the bids came in twice as much as the funding. So this, this project, the concerns that I think we all have is this project has to be scaled down almost in half. So what we really want to make sure and what I think everyone's concerns are is that we're still getting a, you know, a really quality project for exactly the, the scope that they're going to be able to scale it down to. Was there any, any input as to why they came in higher, just the flavor of the year, whatever? You know, did Dusset have any input into, because somebody obviously.
And Andy, before you.
Had an idea of what the bids would be because that's, that's the funding you have, so.
Dubtailing on that, not interrupting at all, but just dovetailing on that. So when you answer the same thing. Is it typical that when you, things go out for a bid, we, we say what we have to, to spend?
We don't.
Sometimes they know.
That's right. We.
You know?
You know, I'll say it depends on the industry, you know, I mean, because.
There wasn't any need to overjump.
You know, if you're talking an operational bid, you know, one they can ask for and most of the time, like the transportation, what's your current contract price? So they've got an idea as to what it is that you're paying for your transportation. For a project like this, that is not a, it's a, you know, I'd say capital, one-time, you know, building of a field to show your, again, show your hand, you know, you, you wonder, you know, as far as, and it just opens it up. You know, I would much rather now, the specifications and training from the Inspector General's office, they always talk about, you know, you don't want to show your hand, let the free market guide because you also don't want to open yourself up to bid protests. So, but as to the reasons why they came in such at a, a higher rate, I mean, there's things, as I mentioned earlier, and there are some other examples of the hauling away fee.
That you don't need.
That they, yeah, that he, you know, the vendor was anticipating having to travel out of the city and when he has to go less than a quarter mile. So there are things like that. There was the thickness of piping, the depth in which that he had to dig down, things that resulted. So, you know, some of the changes in the pricing are not because, just because the cost was higher. It was because there was either a misunderstanding in the specifications by the vendor that, you know, had to be clarified before we even entertain any thought of awarding. The one thing I'll say about that though is it was misunderstood by the low bidder. It was also misunderstood by the other vendor because they bid higher. So, but we didn't really get into a lot of discussion as to, you know, why you bid what you bid. You know, when, in the discussion that we had, we did hear the vendor was talking about the markup that they do for their projects. So, you know, and then when, once they started to talk about, you know, the, the difference of the soil type that they'd be willing to work with, you know, he said, well, I can go to a local vendor for that rather than, you know, he was going to go to Vermont or something for it. So things like that, that resulted in the, the price being brought down.
So when you hear things like the, the thickness of the pipe being diminished or the depth in which the pipe is going to, all those things just make me wonder. I guess what I'm just looking for is once again, you to reassure us that making those kinds of changes, the quality is still at a very acceptable level. We're not just doing this to get it done and then going to suffer.
I also do not have my turf management degree, but I'll tell you from the, initially, I mean, initially I was, I thought we were going to go the route of rejecting bids and rebidding. But with the work that Dusset did and, you know, and yes, it would have resulted in us not having a field if we went the route that I initially wanted to. But the work that Dusset did with the language and the approval from the Attorney General's office regarding the ability to go forward, you know, I am relying on the expertise of the engineers to say, yes, you know, you know, we feel, we're putting our name and reputation on this project with the changes that we've, you know, come to, to say that you're getting what it is that you want.
Yeah, I guess my, my, my point, and I agree with the mayor and, and others who've spoken to this, is that while there are some things where we can understand why it went from five hundred thousand to three hundred thousand that make no difference, right? The less, the shorter distance to transport, that, that has no long-term effect. When you decide to go, if I'm reading this correctly, four inches down rather than ten inches down, that helps explain the difference, right? Originally, I'm looking for the original, is that new depth going to be three, to a depth of three inches, right? Strip the field to a depth of three inches. Originally, it said strip the main field to ten inches. So seven inches of depth of stripping have been taken out. If the primary problem is drainage, that seems to me to be a change in the quality of what you're going to get. And the second one is item number seven, when you move from spacing your drainage system on twelve inches to sixteen inches, it's only four inches, but over the space of, I, I don't have a calculator, over the space of a hundred yard football field, there certainly, that means there's going to be fewer drainage pipes. And again, if we're coming back to the issue being, how well is it going to drain? And we're reducing the number of drainage pipes that are originally prescribed to achieve the desired result. I'm, I'm trying to think of what the analogy would be. It'd be like, you know, if you, if you build, you need the, the ceiling to be ten feet high and to save money, you get it to be eight feet high and everybody keeps whacking their head on it. Well, you've, you've saved the money, but everybody's walking around bent over all the time. So you're getting a different quality product. I just don't feel like I'm. And I would love to see this project go forward because I, I've, I've heard the presentations in the past. I think that we should be careful not to overpromise and then under-deliver on the field. I suspect that, that the reduced depth of the stripping and the increased spacing of the drainage pipes will affect the drainage. And I hope that they still, it still drains clear. But if the field is wet and dangerous to play on because of water or difficult to maintain because of water, then you get eighty percent the way to a solution that requires a hundred percent to solve. And you've, you've spent a lot of money to get eighty percent of the way there, but you haven't addressed the problem.
So I, I think that, you know, the, the alternative here would be, I would guess, to bring Dusset in to have them speak with their expertise to answer your questions. That would mean delaying for another school committee meeting. Because I think we can all kind of surmise, I mean, I think what Andy and I have been going on is the fact that Dusset's been intimately involved in this project from the very first. As Andy said, they're, they're putting their name on the line. And they're, but they're saying to us that they believe that they can scale this project down the way they have so that the vendor is able to accomplish it. And we'll have a, a field that is adequate. It won't be a top-of-the-line football field, but we don't have the funding to do that anyway. And I don't see that we will have in, in the near future.
Andy, I know that the Friends of Football and CPA, they spent a lot of time on this, you know, before the approval of the CPA funds. So the, the Friends of Football were very much involved with this. So they've gone over this with Dusset and they're, and I, I think that what you were explaining is they're satisfied with this revised scope, so to speak. They feel that this will allow them.
Yeah, I mean, we've been keeping Friends and Football abreast of what's going on. And the bottom line, I think, is that they're looking for, and again, I'd say, you know, relying on the expertise of Dusset to say, you know, with our twenty thousand dollars plus the CPA funds, are you able to get us a better football field than what we currently have? You know, and the Dusset's response is yes, because there were some significant discussions between Dusset and myself regarding, what do we do? Can we even go forward? Should we reject? And their, their, you know, view was, let's sit down and discuss. We've got the language in there where we could potentially do, do it. And I don't want to use the phrase cutting corners because that's not what, they wouldn't be putting their reputation on the line if they're saying cutting corners. What they're giving us is a football field with alterations, admittedly alterations. But at a point that is, from, again, their experience, a quality football field with quality drainage and what have you. So I would say, you know, even delaying a week could potentially delay, you know, timeline for it to be ready by the fall.
I think that this.
That is a concern to them.
I think that the sticking point for me is, I mean, ideally, we would have had a, either Mr. Dusset and someone from Mountain View and someone from the Friends of Football here tonight to help, and instead of.
And I'm sorry.
You're shouldering the whole burden and.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, they offered. And I didn't think honestly it was going to be.
It's, I mean, it's a three hundred thousand dollar decision. I'd feel a lot more comfortable with it if they could quantify the difference in what's essentially this change order. If they could say the expected life value of the original plan is X years and the value of this as amended is X. There's no quantification for the changes that they've made, which makes people a little skittish. I understand your point about this is likely the best we can afford. I would still like to have some quantification of what sort of a discount, we're taking a two hundred thousand dollar discount, what's the cost and the product for that? And there's no quantification for that, so it's disconcerting.
So, so Andy, the, all the things that are listed on here, so they basically are, when you have change orders in a project, these are actually change order credits, like negative change orders.
Correct, the deduction change.
Instead of what we're used to.
That's correct.
Okay, so, and that's what's listed. And there's no requirement or anything to mention, to go back to CPA because the prod, the, you know, okay.
So then really our choices are, we can get the additional information, which might all be comfortable for all of us, but in doing so, our choices are down to, we either reject this and it doesn't happen and we have no field for the football team in the fall. and we have no field for the football team in the fall.
We have the current field that we have, which really is.
Which is not, is deemed unsafe.
I'm just being specific.
Or, we accept this and go forward. In other words, we don't have an option to raise more money or increase the quality of the specifications, or change the specifications. We really, even if we did, we don't have that option, it's not an option.
Right.
It's really either, are we gonna make the improvements that we can with what we have, or are we going to not, and not have, potentially not have a playable football field for the next season?
And if this might help also for ease of mind to move this forward, Attorney DuBerey in the contract is going to be putting in language in there to protect the district and the city, you know, to ensure that what it is that we're getting that we want, we'll be getting, and it is what we want. We will also be doing what is done with these projects as you hold a retainage fee of five percent, similar to what the building project was, and then we make sure that everything that we've asked for is done to our liking, our standards, and then we release the final five percent. And there'll be penalty clauses in the contract, whether it's a timeline of it to be done, what have you, but I can tell you Attorney DuBerey will be putting in language like that so that we don't just, in a sense, write ourselves or anyone a three hundred thousand dollar check without any guarantees that what we're getting is gonna be worth the three hundred thousand dollar investment.
Plus, you don't pay ahead anyway.
That's correct.
It's after the services are provided.
Well, that's the concern. The concern is not whether it's gonna be completed, the concern is, is it gonna be?
It's going to be better than what we have.
Is it going to be worth three hundred thousand dollars?
It's going to be, it's going to be a field that our students can play safely on. You know, I don't know, perhaps the five hundred thousand dollar bid was for the Cadillac version.
Exactly.
And this is the, you know, Volkswagen version, but it's a field that our students can play on and, and be safe. And I know that my high school principal, my athletic director, Friends of Football, Dussette, who also has some involvement with the football teams, believe that this is the right thing to do, and Dussette, they are the engineers, and so they're saying to us, you know, they're, they're making every effort, including not charging us fees, to be able to enable us to do this for our students here in East Hampton. And I feel comfortable that it's been vetted well with Andy, with Dussette, with Friends of Football, and that, you know, we'll have a field that, it may not last twenty years, but, you know, that, that's something that we'd have to deal with down the line anyway. But it would be a field that would, is certainly gonna be an improvement over what we have, and I, I feel comfortable in, in the work that's been done to vet the project.
You, you know what I think would be helpful, too? If, you know, there are safety concerns, if anybody has any information on what the safety issues are now versus, you know, rejecting the contract and, you know, waiting another year. Do you, do you know the safety concerns? I mean, they obviously must be to the drainage.
That's been a question to us, yeah.
Yeah.
They must be to the drainage.
It is. It's about students falling, getting injured because of the condition of the field. The field, the condition of the field is such that it's, it's not safe for them to run and play on it. They're, they're in jeopardy of breaking bones, falling, getting injured. Yeah, hindsight being twenty twenty, we should have had the athletic director here to speak with you all about that.
And you said they, they're all in favor of this.
Absolutely, absolutely, ardently in favor of this.
And quite stressed about the time, time, timing of this, too. They're very much stressing about having this ready for the fall, for the fall program.
My athletic director said to me, when I said to her, there may be a glitch in this, and that we may not be able to do this, and she said, what am I going to do? Where are we going to play football in the fall? And I said, well, you know, we can't do something that's not legal. She said, I understand that, but, I mean, she was just crestfallen, heartbroken about what, what was she going to do in the fall. That's, that's, that's her interpretation of the status of the field currently.
That almost not usable.
Right, not usable. That's, that is what she said. Those were the words she used. It's not usable.
That's important.
Laura. Can I make a request on the record that in future, when things like this are presented, just for clarification, that we present all of this information firsthand? I would have appreciated somebody presenting about the condition of the current field. We're taking that as hearsay. Somebody from the engineers, that would have been, you know, the, the city is watching this. We're making decisions about hundreds of thousands of dollars while we're complaining about tight budgets. So, this is as much about doing our due diligence and not just rubber-stamping decisions. It's not a question of, you know, our faith in Andy or Nancy or in any of these people. It's just, there's a reason that we're here and why we're supposed to be tasked with reviewing these things before we vote on them.
Well, and as I said earlier, and I think that's a good point, Laura, as I said earlier, if you feel like you need that before making a decision, you know, we can put off the decision until.
Our next meeting is the sixteenth, two weeks from now. I mean, I know that they are feeling that, you know, the more we delay, the. It's one week. It's next Tuesday.
So, yes.
I believe, I don't remember how long ago, but the Friends of Football, I know it was Amy, Amy Gaiet that was here, and she spoke about, that was when they started talking about putting it in that upper field there. So, we have had conversations of how bad the current football field is. So, we have had those conversations.
Yeah, Friends of Football came and spoke with us at one point.
At least once, maybe twice.
And to the benefit, they spent a lot of time in front of, you know, the CPA committee. And I think their project was put after the soccer fields and baseball fields, so, you know, this is not something that was a quick process through, through CPA.
They were pushed ahead with the CPA grant, ahead of all the elementary school playgrounds, ahead of a lot of other people who applied for those. So, we just want to make, they were granted that CPA money. Lots of other people weren't.
But Laura, Laura, I have, I have to clarify that, because we, as a school district, set it as our priority.
The committee voted, and there was a majority voting to support that, but I'm saying there were plenty of other avenues that were asking for attention, just due diligence, getting all the information and making decisions based on that.
Right, and what, what I was just saying, maybe I didn't explain it right, was there, the projects that were in front of them at the same time, where I believe the soccer, the baseball, and the football, and, you know, there was a lot of meetings on this in a very long time. So, and one of, what you had just said, I was going to ask that, too. Were there other discussions about other fields? And that leads right into because of the safety.
Yes, Wendy.
I just, I, I completely recognize the, the point of the field currently being unusable and a safety issue and stuff, all of that. That, that makes absolute one hundred percent in-your-face sense. At the same time, we're talking about a three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand dollar project and a five hundred thousand dollar actual bid, and I, I just can't make, and a twenty thousand dollar Friends of the Football contribution, which I'm not making little of, but if you look at it in terms of the three hundred thousand dollars or the five hundred thousand dollars, it's a small amount. I'm worried about us making a three hundred thousand dollar decision because of a twenty thousand dollar angst, and, and resulting in still having a football field that doesn't drain and is unusable and unsafe. And whether or not we are not, we don't have some ethical responsibility to go back to other bids with people fully understanding what, what it is that we need and seeing what's realistic. Because what, what this did is, this essentially is just placing us in a hole where we only can deal with this vendor. They came in, they way overshot this, and by this action, we're only, we're only dealing with them. Who knows if, with all these facts in front of us, another vendor could give us a better quality.
Well, that I don't think you can do. That's gotta be the little bidder. That would definitely be, you know, splitting bids.
But the six point six four thing is, is made because of a misunderstanding. There's the language.
Six point six four was included prior to, it was in the specification. So, it's, it was put in there as the possibility of, since we were not going to put, and I get back to my showing our hands of the funds we have available, if indeed they came in above, can we, in a sense, go, it is, I say, it's a narrative version of the mayor's alternate bids. You know, it's a narrative of saying, let the city, you know, school district decide alternates based on.
I get this as an urgency. Athletics is at my heart, and, and safety is paramount. And at the same time, I don't want to make a rush decision that's three hundred thousand dollars because of a twenty thousand dollar commitment.
Wendy, I just want to clarify about that, because it isn't about the twenty thousand dollar commitment. What I, what I'm here to represent is my athletic staff, you know, my, my coaches, my athletic director, principal of the high school. That's really the compelling voices that I'm hearing about repairing this football field. Dr. Perone, a strong advocate of this, our athletic director, our coaches, you know, they're the ones who are talking to me about the, the problems of the current field and their serious need of a new field. So, I, I just want to make sure that it's not.
The difference in depth and the difference in draining, they're absolutely convinced that it's not gonna be, I mean, it.
That, that, that is what everybody is, is believing. That is what everyone's believing. I, you know, I'm not an expert on this. I'm just giving you what.
There are no guarantees.
I'm sure you've had any meetings, Andy, with Dussette.
There would be no guarantees with the original one that it would drain properly anyways. I mean, you, you know, we've done construction projects and other clients where, you know, they've come across things where the intent and the plans for the field, and then all of a sudden, as soon as you go, you know, two feet down or whatever, you hit a, a sheet rock or something, and then all of a sudden, wait a second, this costs. So, you know, to sit there and think that a change in price means that it's gonna be a guarantee from what it is, there would, there's no guarantee under the five hundred eighty-two thousand dollar bid, that it would work anyways.
You're looking at more than a forty percent differential. So, I think that that is just warrants there having been more supporting evidence for that. That's all, that's my only point. It's, it wasn't that if the bid came in at four and our budget is three eighty. There is a really large differential, which means significant changes to the plans, and there's scant supporting evidence. We're asking you to speak on behalf of five or six outside parties and some are, you know.
Well, I, I think I'm very comfortable with Andy speaking for the other parties. I think the first thing he said is they offered to be here, and, I mean, I believe you are representing everybody. I, I can't imagine how many meetings that you've had on this.
Between meetings and emails and stuff, this was, you know, it was, you know, again, this is not a rushed job, if anything. It has been a, you know, I'll say somewhat of a long drawn out, and I know Dussette was frustrated with me at points regarding everything from ensuring that the bid specifications included things like prevailing wage and that the proper advertising occurred, and, and, you know, so, having the Attorney DuBerey review the specifications, have Attorney DuBerey review the alternates, have the attorney general, you know, chime in, who oversees these things. So, you know, there has been enough dissection of this project to, you know, as my father would say, can you go home and sleep well at night knowing that you've done what you need to do? And my response would be yes.
I think, given that, given the tight, tight timeframe that the, that we're under, to have a football program for the fall, as far as we can see, that granted, yes, in a, in an ideal situation, it would have been ideal to have those other people here to explain things in more detail, but I'm feeling as though we need to, at this point, accept the work that's been done and trust what's been done for all the, the background work here and support of what's being put in front of us, and I'd like to see us move forward tonight. Karen?
And just one last thing. We had a lot of discussion on this. You know, it's not unusual for projects to come in overbid. That's not, not an unusual thing at all. And exactly why we talk about alternates, in a drainage, it's a little bit different than, you know, building a whole project. So, you know, basically, what the, what you have before you is, do you want to throw out the project and then you do nothing, or do you want to take, you know, almost like an alternate project and for the safety purposes? So, you do nothing, what are your safety concerns? And what fields will they use? Or, you know, if, obviously, it's not, it's not a possibility to come up with the additional funds. So, I mean, that's what you're looking at. You're looking at, you know, doubling your funds, which isn't, which isn't gonna happen, and to reach to the project that you wanted, or scale it down, for lack of a better word. And, but, that's the choice that's in front of you, but I, I guess we have another concern is the safety of the existing field, and the use of the existing field.
The future of our, our football program. Our football program may not exist in the fall if we don't have a field to play on. I, you know, I don't know how that would work.
May I just respectfully add one more piece, and then I will quasi-promise that all hush? And you, you guys have pretty much changed my opinion, and I, I'm willing to support this with the thing that I, I can't get behind, that one week delay for, for point of having concrete evidence on record from people, because I think in a community where our budget is tight, I, representing the community would like to know that we have evidence that is in our record, that we've been sent, that we've seen from the professionals, who those are actually their roles, that we have it as evidence. And I can't, I just can't take that one week is gonna mean that we don't have a football field next year. So, I, I support this. I'd like to hear from additional people that fit those roles so that we have that, that documentation as official documentation on record.
I think we've had this conversation before. One of the things that's been put to us, I think that, whenever possible, however possible, we hear directly from the horse's mouth and we weigh that evidence. It's not, you know, I'm, I'm not interested in a rubber-stamping rule. I'd like to hear for myself and make a decision based on that. And I, I agree about the one week. I think if it were that imperative, we would have had the proposal earlier. I would support postponing until we have all the information just to not set that precedent that, well, we'll let it slide this time. We've already let it slide four or five times in my tenure on the school committee.
So, Nancy, I'm understanding that the judgment right now is that the field is unplayable this fall.
That's what the athletic director said to me.
Right, because that's important. If the statement is that it can't be played, but, but I also understand that there's no more money. So, knowing that we can't play anyway means that if we get into the middle of July and they discover what Andy just pointed out as a possibility, you know, and, and the mayor just acknowledged that sometimes costs come up that aren't in the original bid, we don't have any money. It, it may be that we don't have a field, even if we say yes to this, that they might clear off the soil and discover that they need more than what they had and have to. And, and so I guess, at, at that point, I assume that there's a, a normal protocol for saying, okay, boy, we started the project, and before it was too far past whatever bend it is, we realize we can't do what we're gonna do, and we're gonna at least put it back the way it was before and not spend all the money. Certainly, some money would be spent, right?
And that is, what you're getting at, is what Attorney DuBerey said, that he's gonna put the language in the contract that the end result is a field. You know, should something like that come up because of the fact that there's no contingency, then it's back to current condition. But he's said the end result in the contract that is that you're, we're gonna get a field.
Okay, and that, and that's helpful to me. I, I share the concerns about understanding, and I take responsibility for having missed opportunities. I was well aware of the, the desire to improve the athletic field. I'm gonna respectfully insist on calling it one of the athletic fields, because my own experience with thirty years of high school athletics is, when you start naming fields after one team that plays in one season, then somebody wants to use it in the spring for some other sport. Is told, no, 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 in order for it to be ready in the fall, you can't play, I don't know, lacrosse, ultimate frisbee, whatever might be popular at the time. And twenty years ago, football was less popular than it is now. Maybe in ten years, something else. I, I would encourage us as a community, when we talk about our athletic facilities, to think of them as being available for whatever sports there might be, particularly during the offseason. Because otherwise, you can, and I speak from experience, have coaches say, no, I don't want someone else on my field out of season, because I want my field to be ready when my season comes around. And then you're talking about, it's no longer the community field, it's a team's field. So, I think the language that we use is, is not just a semantic difference. It works its way into the cultural attitudes of the people who use the facility, and it, and better to have the really difficult conversation now about, thank you very much, Friends of Football, for helping us build an athletic field, that in the fall will be used for football. But at other times, will be used for other things that the community wants to use it for. The, the CPA grant of two hundred eighty thousand dollars, the emphasis there is, is community. They clearly want to help with the construction of a football field, but, you know, that, that, it's not an exclusive thing.
And, and I, I also want to clarify that, you know, if we're in a situation where it looks like we aren't going to have a field that's ready in the fall, I mean, clearly, we, as a school department, are going to have to try to figure out what the contingencies are. So, I'm not trying to hold that over anyone's head in terms of that. I mean, I recognize.
But I understand that.
That, you know, that could be the case. Oh, wonderful. This is our athletic director. So, this is Patty Dougherty, our athletic director.
Will one week make a difference?
Well, let's, let's have Patty-
Will they come in and break in ground?
Yeah, yeah.
But Patty's not gonna know about-
The deadline that, uh-
She's done a lot of talking about it.
The deadline from Dussette, they actually wanted me to write a letter yesterday. They said if we didn't write a letter, and I said, you know, we've, the school community's gotta act on this anyways. This is what I'm saying about, this is not sort of a last minute rubber stamping thing. This has been, uh, behind the scenes between, I mean, even downstairs involvement with the city finance director regarding Dussette's involvement in, in the project, whether or not there was some concern about it being appropriate. So, you know, we've been all along from Friends of Football to downstairs finance director to, back to attorney generals, district's attorney, uh, and I apologize again, Dussette offered to be here, but I thought with the discussions that the Friends of Football had with us, you know, at the previous meeting, that it was almost known that the goal was to get a, an improved football field. And this is what it is that's being presented tonight. So I apologize for not having them here. They offered to be here, but they would not have, you know, asked us to go forward with this, again, because of how much I pushed on them regarding even the bidding logistics of it, uh, to make sure that indeed, as Superintendent Follingsley said before, that it was all legal.
I'm not, I, I don't, I appreciate everything. I think you've gone above and beyond. I don't hold you responsible for any of that. I just think the protocol demanded that this packet be included for us to review prior to even being here tonight, which it wasn't. This is dated May 28th. I saw it 20 minutes into the meeting, and we're being, again, it's over a 40% differential. This wouldn't be a big deal, but I think that there's an error in the protocol here. It's a rubber stamp from my perspective, because I'm given 10 minutes to read this while other people are talking, so I can't even listen to what they're saying to try to digest the information, to then make a decision on that that I have to defend when I leave here tonight. It says nothing against the football field. I'm sure we all want it, we need it, we just, we, our job here is to provide oversight, and I think it's, we're not capable of doing that to the fullest ability in this situation. And just asking that we not do this again in the future. In the future, we should be better prepared to make these kinds of decisions.
And can we have Patty have an opportunity to speak, because I know you had questions about why she believes the, the field isn't safe, and I tried to answer them the best I could, but, yeah, I think it would be good-
Were you watching at home?
No, I just, I was planning on being here sooner, but I was dealing with another field thing. So, anyway, lots of fields to deal with. Um, so the field as it stands right now is in very poor condition. Um, I was out there every week last season. I line the fields, so I get to walk every, into that field. Um, we had volunteers who went in and filled in holes. Friends of Football hired, um, at their expense, not the school's expense. And this is unusual, because we don't necessarily see this kind of financial support from some of the other, um, boosters. They just don't have, the other boosters don't have, um, the financial means that, that Friends of Football does, because they have done a ton of fundraising.
Good fundraising.
We, um, so we hired a landscape company to come in and, and sort of patch up some parts of the field that really could have been a, a real hazard. They would have, had those not been fixed properly, I think Dr. Peron and I would have, would have questioned whether we should have had games on that field. Um, I wish I had this with me. I had sent Nancy an email a few months ago when we realized that, that we, we still hadn't gone out to bid. I was concerned about the process. Um, the financial impact of us not having the field ready for the season is, is great. Um, we would lose, we take in about $1,500 in gates, gate fees, when we have a home game, and then we expend money when we have away games. So, the differential comes down to about $2,000 per game that we would not have at home. My athletic budget can't, can't handle that, so we would have to look up elsewhere for some of the, in the, somewhere, um, to, to support us not being able to have home games this year.
So you're saying the field is unusable as is?
I believe that, um, well, I'm sure that if we got Tom Hogan in here, um, and our landscapers, they probably could, uh, come up with some ideas. Again, not something my budget can, can support.
What are the dates that you'll need it available by? I assume you'll have one date when practices start, and you do practice on that field as well?
Um, we don't need to practice on that field. Certainly pre, you know, right, the day before, the, right before we go into games, we need to practice on that field. Um, the first, uh, the first game is scheduled for the Saturday after Labor Day.
Okay. Patty, can I just inject a comment? 'Cause I, I just wanna, I, I'm, I guess I can't really speak for everybody, but I haven't heard anybody say to anything that would be conflicting of what I'm about to say, and that is, so that is just me speaking to you. I want you to know that my questioning tonight is not at all questioning your thoughts or anybody else's thoughts about the safety of the field.
Right.
Okay? Because that's, that's not the issue at all. I, I am well convinced that our field is garbage, and for many reasons, most importantly, the safety of our kids. We need a new field. My concerns still lie in a financial responsibility to the larger district, not just the football, and that is just making sure we have concrete evidence on record to go forward with the, what's being proposed to us, because we have a larger responsibility than just to our football program. So, I, I don't think you have to convince anybody here about the safety of the field.
Right. Thank you. Yeah. Um, you know, I, I was not involved in, in the bid process. And so I, I can't speak to, you know, whether, you know, what should have happened, or, you know, all I can speak to right now is that we are, by not acting, we're also taking on a finance, we're making a financial decision. So by not having that field ready, we are making a decision to spend more money, one way or the other. And that money, to me, is, will just be thrown out the window, money, as opposed to something constructive.
So you're in favor of the re-bid scope? You've read the scope?
I have not read the scope. I, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
If you, I mean, you manage a budget. You manage the, you have a budget within the, within our larger district budget.
Yes.
From a business perspective of pushing a decision by one week, even if that meant you had one game that we had defined.
Well, if we're talking about one week, my, and again, I haven't seen everything, but are we talking about one week? I mean, if we, and-
We meet next week.
We, we don't have dates on the groundbreaking or the length of the project either, so I don't know what-
Well, but see, but that's what concerns me, because-
It concerns me a lot. But we didn't have that coming into tonight's meeting either.
Right. Well, my understanding was that they would be breaking ground.
We have the assurances from the engineers who designed the project and the scope of services that whenever the groundbreaking would occur, should the committee approve action on it tonight, that it would be ready by the fall for use.
So they, we haven't drafted contracts yet about when they break ground or the length of the time, and, but they're aware of this date about the Saturday after Labor Day?
Oh, there's a deadline that has been agreed to between Mountain View and, and Dussette, should it go forward regarding, and that's why there, you know, Dussette was putting the pressure on me regarding even the bidding, but when it comes time for bidding under 3039M, you need to go for prevailing wage, which needs to be refreshed 30 days out. So, we could not go out, when this started back in the fall, last fall, we could not go out to bid back then, because the prevailing wage rates would have expired. We had to wait until time came for the project to get close to beginning, so that when they do prevailing wage rate, to go out to bid for the prospective bidders, to have an idea what those prevailing wage rates are, they would know what they would have to pay in order to do so. So there's no delay, there was no delay in the process. The process worked the way it's intended to. 3039M is very specific when it comes to doing bids. All procurement laws are, and 3039M was followed as it should have been for this project. So from the legal aspect of things, it was done according to what it is that needed to be done. From the practical and operational standpoint, people were frustrated beyond belief. I get that, but I can't speed up 3039M.
Makes absolute sense. I just-
So there's language of, in the specifications, there's language as to the completion date that Attorney DuPerey is gonna put into the contract with penalty clauses if it should not be met, and in addition to should, with the guarantee that we get a field in the end with the 5% retainage that is done on all project of this nature, so that we get a final approval before we even say yes indeed. This is what it is that we wanted when we entered into this agreement.
Peter?
Assuming that we go ahead, I, and this is not something that's determinative of my vote, but more just the, the practical consequence. Assuming we go ahead, and unfortunately something comes up that delays the completion, uh, what's the, what's the contingency that you use if, I, I'm not familiar with when our first home and first away games are this fall.
Right.
What, what would you do and what would the expenses, would that be, associated with that be?
So if we couldn't-
Can I ask, this fan is horrid. Can you try to speak up a little bit?
Yeah. Um, if we did not have our first home, our first game at home as, as it is scheduled now, um, we, there's three things I would do. One, we would make it an away game. Um, two, we would ask, uh, Holyoke to use their field. Three, we would ask Williston if we could use their, if we could schedule the game at a time when we could use their field. Um, again, you know, Williston would, uh, charge us a turf rental, so any gate would probably just cover that. Um, Holyoke also would charge us something, so any gate would cover that. Um, the option of doing an away game would, um, we would lose our gate and we would have to pay for transportation. So, I mean, one week is, you know, it's not horrible. Um, again, you know, it, it would be a big deal to my little budget, but, um, it, it, you know, if it means, um, getting this done, however, you know, losing this season would be, would be a disaster.
Right. I think we all hope that if we go ahead, that nothing comes about in the renovation process that would cost us the season.
Right. And I would also say, any, you know, of course, losing a home game will have an impact from the community that you, you will hear feedback on, just people not happy about that.
So if this project does not go through, you're not contemplating using that field. You're looking at alternative fields. Is that what you're saying?
For the season?
Yeah.
Well, I, I haven't contemplated that. If, if that's what we were talking about, if we were saying we can't somehow do this for the season, again, I think we would have to go back to the engineers and to, uh, Mountain View and ask them how we can, uh, what can we do to make this field okay and muddle through a season. Again, the, the backlash, uh, you know, would be tremendous, I think.
I, I don't think anybody here has, I'm, I'm not. I'll speak for myself. It's not, it's, it's not an all or nothing. It's not like my advocacy to delay this for one more meeting to get evidence on record means not advocating for the field to be used for next year. Then, it's not one or the other.
So, and is the, so what is the one week that we, we need? Is there, is this, that this committee needs some time to review, I, I, sorry, 'cause I came in?
Some of us were asking for more information to have been presented from direct sources.
Right.
So our next scheduled meeting is next week.
So I guess that leads me right to the same question. So what you want one more week for is to what? Bring in two people to say what Andy has said? Is that, like, to verify exactly what-
I'd like the experts who drafted the documents to come in and explain the documents.
So in other words, to-
Explain the 40% plus differential.
To substantiate what our business director has said.
From their expertise of turf management, they being the people who drafted the agreements, these guys who can explain what the difference in that pipe is, what the difference in the soil grading is.
And Karen, I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt at all, and I don't wanna have a meeting just to have redundancy stuff, believe me. At the same time, when I see the, and I, and I know nothing about this. I don't wanna micromanage it, not in the least. And at the same time, when I see a scope of work that is so vastly different from what the original scope of work was, I want on record, because I don't want a micromanagement, and I don't wanna hear three years from now that I voted in favor of a vastly different scope of work that led to a very faulty field, and that we as a community spent $300,000 on a vastly different scope of work, when we could have spent that money and really needed other areas. I just, I don't, I'm not in favor of redundancy for meetings for meetings, and there is something in me right now that just doesn't feel right, not having evidence from the professionals on record. That's, that's what I'm struggling with.
Did any, um, has, I don't know if anybody asked this of Andy. Did Tom Hogan, is he in favor of what was, um, what was negotiated with Dussette?
They're the ones that negotiated. They're the ones that negotiated.
Right. So Tom, the engineer, is happy?
That's correct. They're the ones that are, they came up with the alternative.
So I feel like I'm being a bit of a pain in the ass. I'm just gonna be frank here. Because if I'd had that information, professional documentation that I could say is on record, I'd be totally fine with this. I really would.
I just, um, I'm ready to make a motion to approve this. I don't know if I have to wait for conversation to stop. We have the evidence from the experts. We've got several of them here. They've been working hard on it. That's what this is, that has had tons of discussion. We've got $300,000 in grant funding for a field. We can't do anything else with it. That doesn't mean that's why we should approve it. We wanted to make sure it's a good field. And I trust the professionals. We've heard from several people. We're not turf managers. We're not experts. We're not professionals. These people who did this are, and I trust them, like I trust the athletic director, the business manager, the superintendent, the Friends of Football, the engineers. I think, um, I don't think there's a need to wait a week. I think we have the evidence. It's not money we can use for anything else. Um, and what's my last point? I'm getting all fired up here.
If I also may, uh, I don't know if this, I'm grasping at straws here maybe, but, uh, please don't be misled by the fact that it's on Mountain View letterhead.
But it is, and that's what's in our school committee record. That's what's in our record.
The scope of service, no, if I may though, the scope of services, that is the response from Mountain View to the scope of, the detail of the scope of services is from Dussette. What you have is Mountain View's response to what Dussette asked them to revise. Do you understand what I'm saying? So-
Yes.
If you're looking for the evidence, and then from, you know, you know, I should have, you know, had them formally put together the changes from 6.4, but what I just said is, give me, and they gave me what Mountain View's response was to their revised scope of services. But the scope of services on the attachment, everything that is expelled out there, that's not Mountain View's response to Dussette saying, uh, we want you to change this to come under 300 grand. This is Dussette saying, bid on this here, based on the discussion that occurred.
Nice. Andy, do you, do you see that that's not what it says, though?
It says to, it says to John Dussette.
Right. I agree. But that's their response. That's to John Dussette.
I get it. I'm just, yeah.
Yep, no, I hear you.
I, I guess, I guess my only, my only point is, you know, I understand, everybody has really basically the same concerns, but my concerns, um, probably a little sensitivity, is the trust in our administration. Um, to me, I, I understand if you need more time to review documents, that type of thing, but just to take more time to have two other people in their scope of work come here and say what our business manager has said and our superintendent and our administrators. You know, that's, I, I'm, if I'm not getting that right, that's what you're looking for. You're looking for the experts you're looking for-
That's a total misinterpretation. Let me clarify, 'cause I feel like I'm being cast in a really negative light. What I'm asking for is what I've asked for three times. Quantification in the difference between the original bid at over- Quantification in the difference between the original bid at over $500,000 and the new bid at $300,000. I fail to see how that requires 45 minutes of back and forth. I would have loved to ask two questions of the engineers to say-
So you're looking for the engineer?
Can you please quantify for me the difference between those two bids that differ by over 40%? I think that's a valid question the community would have, and I think that's what, it's not questionable, lack of trust. I trust Andy implicitly, Nancy, that's, it's insulting to suggest that.
So it says underneath, but it's, to me, it says items reduced or removed from the original scope of work to achieve budget amount.
To achieve budget amount.
Right.
How does that quantify in the quality of the product? There is no evidence offered whatsoever to that. I think it's a valid question that I would have liked to have answered.
So you would like the engineer here, and, and who else?
I don't even need them, yeah.
I think, I think the thing is, is that this is-
I'm just asking a question. You know, I'm not insulting anybody, I'm just asking a question, like, what, what do you want? What would be the difference for next week?
I believe that I stated it, right, several times.
You would want the engineer here, and, so that we're clear as to why you would wait a week? What would, what would happen next week? You would want the engineer here, and it's, it's just a question.
Do you, I don't, I don't know. Should I repeat it again? I don't know what to say.
I would suggest one analogy that might help, just clarifying the communication that's going on. My understanding of my colleague's concern is that you put out a plan for a home that you want to have built, the designer and the architectural firm and all the people associated with the project come in and say, it would cost us $510,000 to build you that house, you say to them, I've got $300,000, and they say, okay, we'll bid, build you a $300,000 house. I suspect that in that course of that conversation, you'd want to have, is what I'm understanding the question to be, some degree of certainty and confidence about how the $300,000, how close will the $300,000 house come to the $500,000 house? We understand very clearly from Andy, some of these costs go away. Some of them are less objectively clear. If you don't have to truck stuff that you're taking off the property as far away, I think everyone in the room gets why that doesn't cost you as much to build a house. If you're changing the spacing of the studs in the wall from every 12 inches to every 16 inches when you're building a house, it's good to have the construction manager say to you, well, this is what that will mean in terms of a difference in terms of how you would insulate that house, or the cost to operate that, that home. That's what I understand the question to be about. It just, you know, what would the operational differences look like? That's my understanding of what's being asked here.
I just have sort of one more thing to say. And just to piggyback on your analogy, if my partner knew more about building the house than I did, and she came to me and said, you know, we're getting it for 300,000, and I talked to the contractor and I'm in charge because I'm an engineer, I would say, let's go. But that's, you know, so just to, just, because that is, that's the end of it, is that the engineer who worked tirelessly, voluntarily on this is saying, this is, I agree to this. Who knows way more about it than any of us? I do, I do just want to throw this out there, that, that changing, I know it probably doesn't seem like a big deal to a lot of people, but to me, moving games is hard, it's a lot of work. There is, it never fails that when, and this schedule has been out, believe it or not, for four months, it never fails that something's missed. We will lose money on moving the game. Selfishly, it takes me a lot of work to deal with it. And I just, I would, if, even moving one week is not, you know, to me, is, is just not a, a good outcome. If this group can't come to some agreement on this tonight and needs that week so that we don't lose a season, then that's my consolation prize. But, you know, moving, you know, having to postpone our season is not an ideal situation at all. And I understand you guys, I understand Laura, you're not in an ideal situation either, but, you know, we've been working on this for a long time, so I think any delay also feels frustrating on this end as well. So.
Okay. Dan, did Dan make a motion?
I think Dan is ready to make a motion.
I move that the East End School Committee award the Whitebrook Middle School football field project per Article 6, 6.4 of the specifications, which states, 6.4, the awarding authority is under no obligation to award the bid in its entirety, the awarding authority reserves the right to award any portion of the phased project individually or collectively as it sees fit to Mountain View Landscapes and Lawn Care Incorporated per the attached scope of services, subject to a legal contract approved by legal counsel and signed by the Chair of the School Committee and Superintendent.
Second. All those in favor? Motion passes. All those opposed? Abstain.
I'd like to go on record, say that my vote for abstention is strictly based on not having accurate evidence reflected in the notes that will be a public document. It is not in any lack of support of the project.
I also just, would just take a minute to remind our committee too, I understand everything that's been shared here tonight, and completely understand all the points that have been made, but I also want to point out that, just for the future, that our role as a committee is not to represent the community, but our role as a committee is to make decisions in the best interest of our students in the school district. So I just want to remind everybody of that, that that's really what we're charged to do.
Chairwoman, with respect, that is representing the community.
Well-
The best interest of our students is representing our community. We're elected by our community members. We represent our community in the best interest of our kids.
Yes, but our defined role is to make decisions in the best interest of the students in the school committee, I mean, in the school district. As opposed to a city council where you have representatives elected for the population of the community. Anyway, just throwing that out there for consideration. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
A couple more things on the agenda.
Several items on the agenda.
We do?
Yeah.
Kindergarten paraprofessional position-
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep looking at the wrong agenda. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, I keep looking at the wrong agenda, I'm sorry. Okay. Kindergarten paraprofessional position for fiscal year 16.
Thank you.
Nancy, do you have anything to add to that request?
I just, a little bit of explanation, as I said earlier, we want to have six kindergartens so that we have a very good teacher-student ratio. We're going to move a teacher from one of the other grade levels down to kindergarten, and we would need another para in order to do that. The way we are balancing our budget, even by adding a para, is because we've eliminated a para at the high school, the high school library.
Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the kindergarten paraprofessional for the position in FY16.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay. Nancy, would you like to share with us the-
Yes, yes.
Agenda item.
So, as I spoke with you earlier, and let you know that we are pursuing a criminal justice, a Chapter 74 vocational criminal justice program for the high school. One of the pieces that, one of the requirements of this program is to have a admissions policy. And so I'm asking you this evening, Polly Parker, our Director of Curriculum, who's done all the work on this, has drafted this policy, and it just, it talks about how the admissions procedure. So I'm asking the school committee to just approve this admissions policy.
Should that go to the policy subcommittee?
No, we thought maybe so too, but it does not need to, because it's not a school committee policy, it's just a, it's like a handbook kind of thing.
Can, I'm sorry, can you explain that distinction a little bit more?
So it's not a school committee policy that would go in our policy handbook, school committee policy handbook. It's more like when you approve handbooks, programs of study, those kinds of things. So this would be just actually part of the, the program of studies for the course Criminal Justice.
This is really exciting.
We're very excited about it.
Okay, and so someone help me out about the, about the process here. Can the Chair speak to, so we're, again, I'm just looking through and trying to track how I missed. I know, I know that we talked about approving the offer, I remember the principal coming and speaking to us about it. I'm, I'm feeling like I'm in an alternate world, that I didn't read this before tonight.
It wasn't available to you.
Okay, so I would respectfully request that if it calls for a vote by us, that we have it in advance of the meeting. Again-
And Peter, may I speak to that?
Well, let me finish, what, my point about it is that it creates, there's a pressure, in the previous discussion, we, you know, the concern was raised about whether or not expressing, has, I understood the concern that was raised, in part, about the opposition to approving the expenditure of the funds for the construction of the new athletic field at Whitebrook, to be related to whether or not the individual had faith, I'll use that word, in the, in the presentation of the information. And I fear that the same concern will come up again here. Most of the matters for action, some of them are quite routine, approving minutes, but it, you know, there's the duck test, this looks to me an awful lot like a policy. And I believe my colleague in the past has suggested that we should refer these things to the policy subcommittee before we vote on them, in the whole.
May I give some background information?
Yeah, so that's, those are my concerns about, about taking action on this tonight.
I did consult with Attorney Dupere about this, and about the proper procedure for approving this. And I asked him if we needed to send it to subcommittee, and he said, no. This is like approving a handbook or a program of studies. You know, my apologies to you for getting, not getting it to you earlier, it was given to me by our curriculum director just last, yesterday afternoon, and then she had to make some changes to it today. And we were also trying to determine whether it did need to go to policy subcommittee first or just to the committee. So you certainly can, we can delay approval of it, it does not have to be approved tonight. It is just something that she was wanting to get approved, you know, so that she could finalize the packet for the criminal justice program, and this is a piece of it that needs to happen in order to do that. So, yes.
Is that a packet that she would like to have in the hands of the students before they depart for the summer? Is that, is that the, is that one of the-
I'm not sure what's so funny.
But is that, but my, my question about is that, is this sequence, would it be better to get it done so the students have it before they depart for the summer?
No, it, there's still a process. We want to have it in place before school starts in September.
Okay.
Because if we can get it in place, we can get the program approved, that's what we're in now, the approval process.
Right, and then my only-
If we can get it approved before the school starts, then we can bring back our students who have left our district or another district.
Oh, I could see plenty of merit to it. I guess procedurally, I agree that the program of studies doesn't get referred to the policy subcommittee. But the program of studies is something that we look at before the meeting where we're called to vote on it.
Correct, correct.
So if this is like that, then by that logic, I don't think it's a delay, it's doing what we've done, which is to read things that we vote on in advance of the meeting, unless there's a contingency. Tonight, we know that we are facing a time pressure related to the field and, you know, the first home football game and $2,000 in a district that can't afford to lose $2,000.
I was asked-
This doesn't strike me as being the same thing. We're not going to lose $2,000 if we vote on this in two weeks, are we?
I think those are valid points, Peter. I was asked by the curriculum director, knowing that there was a school committee meeting tonight, if I would bring it to your attention, to see if you would be willing to, to approve it. And understanding that you might not be.
See, I thought it was related to the meeting that you alerted us to in the, in a prior email regarding changes at, now I'm going to get the wrong, is it Smith-Folk? And so in my, right, and it's separate from that.
Separate, yes.
But I apologize that in my, quickly trying to take it in now, for a minute, I was putting it into that slot and thinking I should understand it from there. That's my mistake, but I'm also thinking about it in the midst of an interesting conversation that we're having about other important questions. So I respectfully submit that we postpone a vote on this, we can, we can ask questions about it, I think that's all great, but it, but it seems to me that it would be a helpful process to have us just read through it and be sure before we said yes, to, you know, it's four or five pages, there's probably nothing in there that anyone would object to, but it's better to have read it than to have said to the folks, no, I didn't read it, I just, I just voted for it.
Very good. And we will put that on the agenda again for next week. Okay? All right. Do we, let me look at the right agenda here. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you very much, everyone.